Welcome to the February 24, 2025, meeting of the Wayzetta Planning Commission. I hereby call the meeting to order. My name is Blake Cameron and I am the Chair of the Planning Commission. I have just a few words to say about how to participate in this evening's meeting. Members of the public may attend this Planning Commission meeting in person or watch and listen remotely by viewing the meeting on Channel 8, WCTV, and on the city's website at www-wayzetta.org/wctv. Public comment during the public forum and/or public hearing portions of the meeting may be provided in person at the meeting in advance or by logging onto the Zoom call and raising your hand during the public hearing. When you hear your name called in the meeting, you will be seen and heard in our council chambers and on the cable channel. You will be asked to unmute, and then you may begin your comment. All public comments must include your first name, full name, sorry, and address. And I'm sorry, I'm going to skip back up to the top because I've skipped the part about the Zoom meeting. For those who would like to join the meeting on Zoom, the meeting ID is 262-125-416247, and the passcode is displayed. The city encourages comments and questions about items on the agenda, and when possible, request you submit them in advance by emailing publiccomment@wayzetta.org, calling city staff at 952-404-5323, or mailing Wayzetta City Hall at 600 Rice Street East, Wayzetta, Minnesota, 55391. Attention, public comment. Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of tonight's meeting agenda. Does anyone have any questions or proposed changes to the agenda?
Chair, let's take a roll.
Take a roll. I missed roll. I'm sorry. Planner Quarles, can you please take a roll?
Happy to. Commissioner Ankeny?
Here.
Commissioner Schwabey?
Here.
Chair Cameron?
Here.
Commissioner Severson?
Here.
Commissioner Elg?
Here.
And Commissioner Van Loy?
Here.
And please note that Commissioner Planton has an excused absence tonight.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Cut that out of order. Next, let's roll to the agenda. Does anybody have any changes or additions or questions about the agenda this evening?
No.
No? If not, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved. Severson.
Second. Schwabey.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the motion passes and the agenda is approved. Next on our agenda tonight is the approval of the consent agenda. This evening's consent agenda consists of the approval of the meeting and workshop minutes from February 10, 2025. Does any commissioner have any questions or comments on any item in the consent agenda?
No.
Nope.
Cool. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved. Van Loy.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the motion passes and the consent agenda is approved. Next on the agenda is the public hearing items. This evening, we have one public hearing item, which is the preliminary plat for 565 Ferndale West or the Ferndale Bluff subdivision. Planner Quarles, could you please walk us through the application?
Absolutely, Chair. All right, so tonight, we're going to be talking about a subdivision application called Ferndale Bluff. It's located at 565 Ferndale Road West and is currently owned by the Cape and family. The project is located on the north side of Ferndale Road West, adjacent to PV Pond. It's zoned R1A, and it's guided in our comprehensive plan as estate single-family. It's also within the Shoreland Overlay District in our zoning code. The property is surrounded by a couple of different land uses. On Hillside Drive and off of Ferndale Woods and Bovee Road are all R1A residences. As I mentioned, PV Pond is to the east there, and then on the south side of Ferndale Road West is R1 single-family residences, and those are going to be a smaller standard lot size than R1A. And then, of course, Lake Minnetonka. This is a street view from a greener time of year, but shows you looking north from the driveway, and then if you're standing on Ferndale Road, looking north. When looking at existing conditions, that gray line that comes up through the property is the existing driveway. That yellow line that goes around is an existing gravel driveway. PV Pond is to the east. There's quite a bit of wetland on the property depicted in green. And then there are some existing structures on the property. There's an existing house, an orange. Just to the north of that is a detached garage, and then off of that gravel driveway is a When looking at existing conditions on this property, there's a lot going on. PV Pond has a lot of elements surrounding it, like steep slopes, bluffs, and wetlands. Each one of those elements has buildability restrictions under the subdivision and shoreland code, which we'll talk about in the rest of this application. And each of those elements has a strict definition. So there's a lot of really great graphics within this application, breaking down exactly where those elements are within the application. It's a very densely wooded lot. Over 700 significant trees surveyed on the lot, although a significant portion of those are dead, diseased, or dying, or ash trees, which our forester excludes from our calculations due to emerald ash borer. You can see that they're concentrated really all over the lot, but a few gaps where the existing houses on some of the bluffs and then where those driveways are as well. This application has been in front of the Planning Commission and the city council before. In 2023, the project went through an environmental assessment worksheet process, and this was triggered by the city after the project was initially submitted in 2022. At that time, the project had more lots associated with it, and each of those lots were going to have docks on PV Pond. The number of docks was what triggered the environmental assessment worksheet process, and so that process allowed us to do quite a bit of extra information gathering about the project. So through that, the applicant did a cultural resources assessment to see if there were any artifacts on the site. They did some evaluations around bald eagle habitat and some more information about wetlands. The outcome of that worksheet was that no further environmental study is needed, and that the city and other regulators' existing permitting processes would be enough to mitigate environmental issues that would come up with the site, so similar to any other redevelopment site. That was approved at a city council meeting, so that's been the only time that they've looked at the project so far. Now, in 2024, or sorry, that was last year, in 2024, the applicant took a shot at applying for four lots on the site. All of those lots were riparian, meaning they had access to PV Pond, and they also asked for a variance for increased cul-de-sac length, so that road went further up into the property than it's proposed to go today. The outcome of that discussion was that the Planning Commission recommended denial, and the applicant withdrew before a city council meeting. Today, the development application looks a little different. The application is to divide the existing lot into three riparian lots that also have access to PV Pond, and to create a new public cul-de-sac to serve those homes. And the only request that we're considering is a preliminary plat for those three R1A lots. So to look at zoning first, looking at R1A zoning, they are compliant in terms of lot width, lot depth, and that 80,000 square foot lot size minimum in the R1A district. The public street is what allows those widths to be met, because that's measured based on frontage on a public road. And then looking at the comprehensive plan density, the estate single-family district that I mentioned earlier asks for a quarter to a half unit per acre, and the overall development density, when you take that, almost 12 acres and divide it by three, is .26 units per acre, so right in there. Also, under R1A, we regulate lot coverage, which is the amount of a lot that buildings take up, an impervious surface, which is all hardcover. Those large lots and really limited buildable areas do a lot to help create compliant totals. It's really difficult to get up to that 10% lot coverage max and that 20% impervious surface max. So those are, I mentioned, those buildable areas are also restricted by things like driveway slopes, garage floor elevations, and that's particularly relevant for Lot 1. So I've got those areas outlined in green because they're not impacted by all that stuff we mentioned earlier, but those actual buildable areas in some cases are even a little bit smaller. Side lot lines, I just want to mention in particular because it was a discussion point the first time around. The ordinance requires side lot lines to be at right angles to street lines and radial to the lake shore. In this case, because there are only two lot lines per lot, with the exception of the outlots, that meets both standards now. That's in contrast to that previous proposal where there were a couple more lot lines per lot. This is a pretty complex part of the application. So one of our provisions within the subdivision code is that we try not to approve, or rather we can't approve subdivisions where a later variance is needed. So you can't approve conditions that would force someone to come back to Planning Commission and city council in the future. This is the main place where this might come up because of the way that our shoreland setback rules are created. So whenever you're redeveloping along the lake, your new home has to be either 75 feet from the lake shore or behind a line drawn between the two closest riparian structures on the lake. So this is a little bit easier when you've got a less aggressive curve to the lake shore and all the houses are fairly close to the lake. It does get a little bit more complicated for this one. So the applicant has run through all of the orders in which the houses could be built, including whether or not the current house gets torn down because it sits on Lot 2 today. And the only scenario in which a setback variance would be needed is if Lot 1 builds first and that existing house is torn down, and the applicant is committed to putting a covenant within their development agreement to address that scenario. So to review those bluffs and steep slopes I mentioned earlier, those are in red, and they also include bluff impact zones and bluff setbacks, so quite a bit of restriction even outside that actual bluff. So just wanted to note that those proposed building pads and driveways are in areas compliant with those bluffs. Protected areas is a discussion point that should certainly be mentioned. Reading straight from our code, we deem environmentally sensitive land by talking about wetlands, drainageways, watercourses, floodable areas, or steep slopes. Because this area is so topographically challenging, there's quite a few steep slopes. But the follow-up code provision talks about whether those areas are to be incorporated into lots within the proposed subdivision and defines those as slopes over 18%. And I note both of those because there are slopes over 18% that will be impacted, but they'll be impacted by the grading associated with the public street. The way that the applicant has set up their current, and I'll go back a second to show a good one, the way that the applicant has set up their building pads and their driveways has no impact on slopes over 18% on those private lots. So that's compliant with that particular provision, even though the street itself will impact those 18% slopes. For trees, as a reminder, a subdivision application in this case is just going to be for impacts related to the road construction. Future private owners of those new three lots are going to have to deal with their own tree preservation plans that are going to depend on exactly what kind of house they want to build and where exactly their driveway goes and that sort of thing. For the road construction only, it's removing about 122 significant trees, but no heritage trees. That requires 577 inches of replacement. The applicant is proposing 113 and a half inches, and then the reasoning for suggesting fee in lieu of planting for the rest of those inches is primarily because the existing lot is so wooded already that it doesn't make a lot of sense to plant new trees under the canopy where they aren't likely to survive and do well. Within those buildable areas, those demonstration building pads and driveways will impact significant trees, but appear to have a limited impact on heritage trees. And like I mentioned, it's all going to depend on what plans that they come up with in the future for exact numbers. The street is a very visible part of this. It's 526 feet long to the middle of the cul-de-sac. As I mentioned, it provides sufficient frontage for those three R1A lots. There are stormwater ponds for runoff on the north and south ends, so one, that's that. You can see those contour lines coming really tight on Lot 1 to the north, and then there's also a pond directly on the south side. And those are both to handle runoff from the street. And that street meets the minimum subdivision standards for a local street, and so that's a pavement width of 26 feet and a right-of-way width of 50 feet. It can't get much narrower than that without being a private street, and a private street is a whole other approval process. Even then, the fire code is going to really restrain how much narrower that street can get. There are also two outlots on the other side of the street, and that's primarily so that the two, sorry, the one retaining wall that stretches across those two outlots can be under private responsibility and control. And the reason for that is that the city is fine with taking on responsibility for the public road, but not for the retaining walls. So those outlots are proposed to be tied to the lots that are across the street from them. In terms of future grading, you know, that road construction, driveway, stormwater infrastructure, homes, accessory buildings, walkways, and stairs, and to mention the height of those retaining walls, in order to have this road sort of cut through the existing slope, those will be pretty tall retaining walls, seven and eight feet on either side, so that the road can hit that 8% grade maximum. The engineer has reviewed the submitted document and has no additional comments, but they will certainly be quite involved in reviewing and approving those final plans when we look at final plat, development agreement, and building permitting, and other permits associated with the road. Neighborhood notification was standard, in the sunsailor and mailed to property owners. As of 5:00, and I tend to get more as we go, we've gotten about a dozen public comments. Most of them are Wayzetta residents. About half are in support of the project, and about half of them are opposed to the project. Those who are opposed are generally concerned about environmental impacts, impacts to PV Pond and the western neighbor, the size of the road, potential tree impacts, and just overall concerns around land disturbance and cut-and-fill amounts around grading. This is a reference slide. I won't run through all these questions, but as you look at this application, these are all tied to the criteria that are directly within our subdivision code, so things like consistency with the comp plan, character, performance standard, and depreciation of property values. And then, you know, looking at that preservation of sensitive areas, grading, trees, and suitability. So our next steps for the rest of the night is that now's a good time to ask clarifying questions of staff, whether that's based on the presentation or based on the packet. The applicant will then give their presentation. The PC will then be able to ask questions of the applicant. We'll have our public hearing, where everyone who's here to speak will have the opportunity to, and then after that, the Planning Commission will deliberate and make their recommendation and speak with staff along the way if they'd like to. Happy to take any questions.
I have a question.
Mr. Schwabey.
I have a question for, I think, our city attorney. A little clarification on what our role is here. Are we looking at this strictly as a land use situation, or are we more quasi-judicial, where we have more ability to look at other issues besides just the use of the land?
Commissioner Schwabey, so the application is for approval or recommendation, or I'm sorry, the application is for approval of a preliminary plat. And so you're looking at the proposed plat with all the criteria from the subdivision ordinance, and at the end of the evening, we'll ask you to make direct staff to prepare a draft report and recommendation with your findings and with your recommendation to approve or deny it. Now, you can attach reasonable conditions to that recommendation, or you can recommend conditions, and staff might have a few of those recommendations for you. But in terms of, does that address your question?
Well, it's been brought up quite a few times in the correspondence, and so I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding what our role would actually be here. So I think you have answered it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Ankeny.
So who is responsible for building the road?
Great question, Commissioner Ankeny. So the applicant would build the road and be responsible for the costs of building the road, and then the city would be responsible for ongoing maintenance as a public street.
I have a couple of questions.
Commissioner Severson.
Okay, so as I understand, I just wanted to be sure I'm clear that, and if you go back to the slide that had the preliminary plats on it, if you could go back to that slide, with like the little map, ES 16 maybe, or 15? So we are concerned right now about what they will build there, right? We're only concerned about where the placement of the home possibly could be? Is that my understanding?
Yes. So the subdivision code asks for building pads to be approximately placed, basically so we have an idea of what could be built there, but the actual location and design is going to depend on future building permitting.
And then the same with the home that's existing there, right? Like, we don't know if that could be torn down or maintained?
Yep. The current owner or future owners could make that call at that time.
So what happens if we, let's say, recommend for approval, goes to city council, they approve it, and then the lots are sold and they come back and want something completely different than what we've sort of preliminary agreed to? What happens then?
From a clarifying perspective, do you mean in terms of the homes themselves or the lot configuration, the homes themselves?
Or both, yes.
If someone wanted to change the configuration of the lots, they likely need to come back here and ask again. If someone wanted to change exactly where the house is within the buildable areas, they can do that. At the end of the day, it's a subdivision that provides for lots that are zoned a certain way, and if it meets setbacks and setbacks from sensitive areas and all those sorts of things, as long as they operate within those restrictions, they can move those homes around a bit. They just need to continue to follow those zoning rules.
So what you said just right before that of if they wanted to change anything but the lot lines, we're still, though, approving, or potentially could be approving, that gets subdivided three ways. So that decision sort of becomes in final, and then they would have to come back later and get reapproval of how they organize on that lot? Does that?
I think that, so I just mentioned the lot lines thing because we're talking about the subdivision specifically, but we're approving this subdivision with these lot lines exactly where they are.
Okay.
That's being approved, or that's being recommended for approval by this group. City council would affirm that, and that would be as-is. That's how it would stay unless they, you know, wanted to re-subdivide it for some reason in the future. In terms of where the houses can actually go, as long as it's compliant with zoning, it just goes through building permitting. They don't need to come back for home design or home placement unless they need a variance.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Commissioner Elg.
Are there just two outlots associated with the retaining wall, or are there, or all three?
There's just two outlets, outlots, and they split ownership of that retaining wall on the west side. I will also note that there's a retaining wall on the east side as well, but that's, you know, on the same lots as the houses.
Okay. Then we have on those outlots, retaining wall heights of seven to eight feet?
Yes. So the one west of the public road on the outlots is eight feet tall, and the one east of the public road goes up to seven feet tall.
Do we know at this time how they'll be constructed, or is that?
I know that engineering for, I think, retaining walls over four feet requires an engineered retaining wall, and that's about all the information that I know.
Can you give us a little more clarification? What would that feel like, driving up that driveway and saying that, so the retaining wall will be just to your right if you're driving into the development, and it would be seven feet tall?
Yes. So when you are heading up that driveway to the north, first, on your left side, you'd start to see a retaining wall come up as the road essentially cuts through that existing hill. The existing hill is illustrated really well on this slide. So that curving line that goes up and down a little bit is that existing grade, and then that smoother line that cuts through it is the proposed grade for the road. So as you go through, as the land on either side rises and falls, that's where those retaining walls would be.
I wish I had a better picture of that in my mind. I'll think about it.
I will note that those are going to be a little bit further out from the actual pavement, so it's not just going to be like you're on pavement and then immediately there's retaining walls. Those are spaced out a little bit further from the actual pavement.
When you say out a little bit further, do you mean three feet, five feet?
Well, they're about, they're out of that required right-of-way, which is 50 feet, because we wanted them on private property, so.
Okay.
It's going to be about 15.
About 15 feet on either side, 10, 15 feet.
So is the retaining wall going up from the road, or is it down below the road?
The road is low, the retaining walls go up.
Goes up, okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Because right now, that driveway is.
Just goes over.
On the hill, and then there's like a drop-off on the left.
Yep, and just handles that sort of steep hill as-is.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions for you guys. Can you go back to Slide 16 real quick? Or, yeah, so are the green areas on the far right there, the green areas, is that the buildable area based on code?
Roughly, yes.
Roughly? Yeah, I mean, okay. That's, I was, and then the blue is, the blue boxes, if you will, is what's kind of just been put out there as this is where they would put the house, but they can put the house basically anywhere inside that buildable area?
Yeah, that's what we were calling demonstration building pads. So the ones on Lot, I don't see the ones on Lot 3 potentially moving around too much just because that buildable area gets pretty narrow because it's kind of on that, in that narrow area there. Two, I don't see moving around a whole lot because that driveway can't get much steeper than 10%, and so they've got to curve around in order to meet that maximum grade. And then Lot 1 seems like it has a bigger buildable area, but our code states that garage floors need to be, I think, a foot higher than street grade in general, so if you go much further back, that's actually, it starts dropping off, and that's difficult to do. So the location of that is kind of nestled in there.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Sure? Okay. Quick, then, quick question on the 8% grade. Do you know, like, just trying to like wrap my head around how steep 8% is? How steep is Broadway back behind us? Do you know?
God, I hope steeper. I'd have to double check. I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay.
I could try to look that up.
And just, I was just kind of curious, right? I mean, that's a steep grade, right, for, you know, just for a driveway and then having walls on both sides, but, I mean, I think that's, you're trying to make the best of what you've got to make it work, so.
At the end of the day, we have a maximum, and I think it's just depend, it just depends on the practical design for a road, so.
Okay, cool. Commissioner Schwabey.
I don't remember what the slide name was, but it showed the three houses, and then a line drawn from 1 to 3, a line drawn from 1 to 2. And I know that we had talked last time about the consequences to a lot. If, say, in this case, 1 and 3 got built first, does that have a negative impact on where number 2 can build?
Yes, and that's why the applicant has noted that they'll provide a covenant included in their development agreement in order to make sure that that scenario doesn't happen because that would be one of those scenarios that forces a variance, and we need to avoid that.
Because we don't want to have to force a variance.
No, we don't. And that Lot 2 scenario would also involve that original house being demolished as well.
Okay, thank you.
Cool. Anyone else?
I have one more question. If you, the pond that's going to be created right next to Ferndale, I'm just wondering, from a visual standpoint from Ferndale, is that going to be significantly different than the view today? So basically, you're going to be looking into that pond, or is it far enough back that it's not actually going to be visually noticed from Ferndale?
I think it would depend on what kind of screening the applicant may or may not place at that point. It seems like there's kind of maybe an existing hedge, but I can see that that could be impacted. You know, any trees that are in the location of that pond would no longer be there, so it probably would be a visual difference from Ferndale Road.
Okay, thank you.
Cool. All right. Thank you, staff.
Oh, whoa, sorry.
It looked like 122 trees removed. I don't know what slide listed that. And a previous slide listed how many approximate dead or dying or diseased trees there. So when they say removing 122, do you delineate there's 50 dead ones?
Yes. My understanding is that. My understanding is that that 122 excludes that dead, diseased, or dying, because the way that we calculate how many replacement inches are needed excludes dead, diseased, or dying, but I'd have to double-check the packet to figure out whether those are included or not.
Thank you, staff. Appreciate it. At this time, I'd like to invite the applicant to come forward and address the commission. Please state your name and address for the record, and if you're an advisor, please state your role on the applicant's team. Given the amount that we need to cover, if you could keep it as close to 10 minutes as possible, that'd be great. Not going to be, it's complicated, so.
We did talk with Val and Emily, and they said they'd give us a little extra time, but actually, they covered some of our slides, so I'll just try and breeze through those. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Cameron, members of the Planning Commission, and staff. My name is Mike Stedman, and my address is 401 Lake Street East in Wayzetta. I am with Compass Real Estate, and I have specialized in new construction and land development for over 30 years. I have been in several projects in the Lakeman 30 years. I've been in several projects in the Lakewood Minnetoka area, such as Locust Hills, Island Oaks, Shoreline Estates, and Willow Bay Sanctuary. I am working with Meredith Howell with Coe Banker. She is, of course, a longtime resident of Ferndale, an exceptional upper bracket real estate professional, and a, and highly involved Wayzata resident. We have been working with the Cape and family as partners and advisors for several years on this project. We are grateful for the time and attention, city staff, and the many neighbors who have stepped up in support of the project. We would also like to thank you, the Planning Commissioners, for your time and dedication to the community. This is important work, and we appreciate your service. Before we begin, and I turn it over to Samantha for her short presentation, we would like to highlight some themes that you will see in her presentation that are important. This project is a culmination of careful planning by the family, who have been residents in Wayzata for over 60 years, working with an exceptional group of consultants, land planners, engineers, environmental experts, and designers, and working closely with city staff for over five years. You have before you an exceptional variance-free subdivision proposal for three lots on 12 acres that is compliant with city code and zoning, that have been scaled down well below what would otherwise be permitted by city zoning and city requirements. It is attractive, environmentally sensitive, and thoughtful in design. We are particularly excited to think that we could bring three young families to the Ferndale area, a neighborhood that used to be a vibrant year-round family neighborhood, but now tends to hold large seasonal homes empty for most of the year. This sort of reasonable growth adds energy and longevity to the community. I know that the family and our team are very proud of our proposal, which, beyond being compliant, is variance-free, very low density, completely consistent with the established family neighborhood character, designed to be environmentally responsive and sensitive. With that, I'd like to introduce Samantha Muldoon.
Hi, I'm Samantha Cape and Muldoon, and I'm the owner at 565 Ferndale Road West in Wayzata, Minnesota, 55356. My home address is 1801 West Farm Road, Long Lake, Minnesota, 55356. No, I'm sorry, this is 55391, I'm 55356, sorry. And I'm not gonna, just before I start, I want to echo Mike's sentiments in saying thank you so much for your service to the community. It's very much appreciated. I know it's a hard job, and I very much appreciate it. I appreciate the city staff who've been very patient with us for the past several years if we've worked on this project, and then also my team, who for the past five years has been really amazing and a wonderful expertise bringing to this project. I am not going to dive deep into the weeds on this, because, as you know, we submitted a almost 400-page application that's very, very detailed, and I assume you've seen most of it. What I'm going to do is just give you a broad overview of the project. I'll buzz through some of the slides that the city's already covered, dive into a few issues, and it's, it's a short presentation, and there'll be time for questions afterwards. Sorry, I don't know how the clicker works, so let me.
I can advance the slides if you just want to, let me know when to.
Click.
This is too long.
The whole project starts with my family, and my parents in specific, who bought the property in 1964. They raised their family on Ferndale, they're currently retired, and the three, their three daughters own the property, and we are the ones seeking the subdivision. Click. Just a quick introduction, I know there was detailed bios in the application. There are three of us. I'll start with my sister Heather. She is a former licensed landscape architect who lives in Northern California with her husband, who has a landscape architecture firm, and her three young boys. My sister Allison lives in Seattle with her husband Mark and my niece Camille. And Allison is a licensed architect, but she's also a nationally-known environmental and sustainability consultant of over 20 years. She's a former lead reviewer, and she speaks around the country on environmental and sustainability issues. I am not nationally-known at anything, but I am a local community volunteer. I'm a conservationist. I'm the vice chair of Long Lake Waters Association, which is a watershed conservation group. I am a former conservation chair of the Lake Minnetoka Garden Club, where I was honored to speak on behalf of native plants and the environment, both locally and in Washington DC. I'm a former board chair of the Minnesota Zoo Foundation Board, where I spearheaded our strategic plan, which was to connect people and nature in order to save wildlife. I live here in Orno with my husband Paul and my children Angus and Lydia. Click. I've, we've been lucky to have the support of an expert team. I'm not going to go into too much detail. I know this is a bit of an eye strain to read. I do have several of the people here on the chart. I've got Brad Shibe, who has been the lead environmental planner and city planner on the project. He has expertise in shoreline, bluffs, and trees. I have Mark Gronberg, who's been the lead surveyor and engineer, civil engineer on the project. He has 40 years of experience, including extensive stormwater management expertise. I think the only thing on this chart you need to see that I would point out is that decades of experience that everyone brings to this project, and decades of local experience we've used, people who are familiar with this area and who understand the rules and regulations, and I, I'm so proud of the work that they've done. Click. Just an overview of where the project's located vis-à-vis downtown Wayzata. It's on PV Pond. The green arrow points to it. You can see that from the comp plan, figure 36, 2040, it's guided for development in this time period, 2020 to 2030. Click. I love this picture. This is just a bird's eye view of the neighborhood, taken a few years ago, and what I love about it is it just speaks to the evolution that is Ferndale. You can see that there are houses being constructed there along the road. Both of those houses have now been finished. Two other houses have been taken down to provide lawns for the people who live in the houses next door to them, and two other houses are being built up in the Ferndale Woods Road at the top over PV Pond. So it just speaks to the evolution that is Ferndale and the change that is inevitable, and we are here to propose a small change that's part of the fabric of the neighborhood. Next. So what we're proposing is three conforming lots on almost 12 acres. Currently, there are two houses on the property. This would be three lots and three residences. This is approximately half of the allowed density under the code. The road is 526 feet long, 26 feet wide. No variance is needed for the road. It is designed to the minimum standards that the city has in terms of, as small as it could be, and it lays over mostly the existing paved driveway. And I think one of the things I just want to note, because it's very important, we are not putting in the housing pads, we are not putting in the driveways, we are not putting any docks, we are putting in the road and the utilities that go up the road, but people will have, be able to choose where they cite their houses based on where the, you know, what they want to do, but they will have to abide by the regulations in the city of Wayzata, the setbacks, the height regu, all of it. So this isn't that they can willy-nilly build anywhere on the lots. They are, have very strict buildable areas, and they need to stay within them when they put their houses in. Click. So again, another chart with a lot of information on it, and I'm not going to spend too much time on this. This just gives you an overview of when we started in 2019 and when we ended on 2025. Internal development happened for those first few years, where we hired several survey firms, we did wetland delineations, we assembled the team, and we met with neighbors starting in January of 2019. We have several years doing that internal work, and that was also COVID. We went to the city in 2022 and have been working with them for the past several years, coming up with different iterations on the plan, which I'll dive into on the next slide. We've done cultural reviews, BAT surveys, meeting with the LMD. We did a detailed EAW, cultural reviews, revised the plan, the guidelines for trees were revised, the guidelines for bluffs were revised. It's been a lot of work, but we're, thus the 380 pages in the application, but that all brings us to where we are today in 2025 with a three-lot plan, three riparian lots, and a 526-foot road. Click. And this just points out, I think it's important to know that we have been meeting with the neighbors, both one-on-one and in groups, since we started in January 2019, up until the last neighborhood meeting that we held February 12th of 2025. Every year, there have been multiple meetings, discussions, and touchpoints with the neighbors. Click. So this slide here is really the evolution of the primary plans. There were lots of other iterations in there, but these are the important ones, I think, to sort of understand where we are and how we got to where we are today. We started in 2022 when we went to the city with a four-riparian lot plan and a 600-foot road that would not have required a variance. We also, we worked on a lot of different iterations in that time. We ended up netting out at a four-riparian lot plan with a 725-foot road that would have required a variance for length, and we took that to the Planning Commission in May of 2024. And that was, as you know, recommended for denial. There were three main concerns coming out of that meeting. First, the irregular lot lines. There were a fair number of them. Second, there was the concern that a future homeowner may possibly need to get a variance due to the shoreline setback regulations. And third, there were concerns about the impacts to steep slopes on the different lots. There, some of the driveways were crossing over 18% grade, and also that we were not communicating the mitigation strategies that we'd already brought to the table very coherently when we went to the Planning Commission. So after the Planning Commission meeting in May, we took the feedback we got from the Planning Commission very seriously, and we took it very much to heart. And we went back and looked at the plan and thought about what we could do, and really made a lot of work to come up with a new plan that we brought to the staff in July and August of 2024. And that plan was a four-lot plan, but with three riparian lots. What that allowed us to do by making lot one, which is the top lot, non-riparian, is it allowed us to simplify the lot lines. It allows us to eliminate the shoreline setback issue, and it also gave us a little space to move around some of the building pads and driveways to get further away from that 18% grading. We were very heartened when we took this to the staff, and, you know, in a meeting, they said this is a game changer, and this is exactly what we'd hoped we'd see, and we were very optimistic about the future. We then decided, rather than going to a full, complete application, which again is 400 pages and takes a lot of time, that we would meet with the neighbors to get their reactions and feedback before we finalized our application. So I embarked on just visiting with each of the neighbors who'd either been supportive or expressed concern, visiting with city council members, visiting with other stakeholders to get feedback on this plan. And we were gratified to see that most of the neighbors who were not as happy with our first plan were very pleased with this plan. And a lot of the neighbors were very supportive of it. However, there were still three, potentially four neighbors, who said that they would prefer to see fewer lots and a smaller road. So we have approached this entire process trying to be good neighbors. We live on Ferndale, we understand how personal it is to everyone, and so even though our four-lot, three-riparian plan is code compliant and does not require a variance, we went back to the drawings to see what could we do to try and address their concerns. And what we came back with is the plan that you're looking at today, which is a three-riparian lot plan on a road that's 526 feet long. When we brought this to the staff in November of 2024, the feedback from the staff was recognition that these were significant concessions, and we, at this point, know that we have gone above and beyond what the code requires to try and deliver a plan that we know we feel very proud of it. And we can go to the next slide. This is not an insignificant minor change. This is a major change going to where we are now. We have reduced the number of residential lots on 12 acres to only three. We have reduced the number of riparian lots on over 400 feet of shoreline to only three. We've reduced the proposed road to 526. We've rerouted the road onto the existing driveway in order to avoid as many trees as possible. We've added a curve to the road to improve the aesthetics when you see it from Ferndale. We have reduced the scope, both the length and the square footage of the retaining walls by half. We have relocated the cul-de-sac so that it's below the sightline of the western neighbor, and we are improving the forest variety and health through replanting and native species selection. We have minimized tree removals as much as possible to less than 16% of the trees. The road adjustments alone saved 44 incremental trees. We have eliminated every heritage tree removal, and when you look at our potential building plans, pads for illustrative purposes, and the driveways, they also avoid all heritage trees. We are regrading the road from its current 15% slope, which is well above what the code allows today, to meet the 8% standard in current code to improve the safety of the access to the property. We have eliminated all lot and driveway grading on steep slopes, which is, that is over 18%, and we have minimized the 18% grading to be solely on the proposed road, which is allowable under code, and that is less than 1.5% of the total property area. So click. I'm not going to spend time on this unless people have questions about this later, because I feel like Val covered it. Click. The project was designed, and I think it's important to know, we designed it to be in harmony with the environment. Wayzata did the EAW Environmental Assessment worksheet in spring of 2023. That worksheet found that there were no environmental issues that prohibit development on this lot. The subdivision will not negatively impact Peevee Lake, the wetlands, or the watershed. The visual impacts of the project will be insignificant because of where the houses and the road is located, away from the pond, away from the lake, and deep in the woods. The area is not significant in terms of biodiversity, and I think the headline, really, or the conclusion, that the environmental impacts can and should be adequately managed by the city's, the watershed, and the state existing permitting process. And I put the little slide from last year's PowerPoint presentation at the top, where that's in there. Click. In summary, we are very proud of what we're bringing to you today. We feel like this project is responsive to the habitat and the environment. It's responsive to the city staff's input and their feedback, and the council input. It is very responsive to the extensive neighbor feedback that we have received. It's consistent with the Wayzata city code, with the zoning, all city and state and DNR regulations, and the 2014 comp plan. It's also consisting with the existing neighborhood in terms of character size and scale per the code. This is a good project for the community. We feel like it's attractive, vital, and relevant. It's low density, and it has a thoughtful use of the land. It will create a healthier forest and a safer road. It has the potential to bring new, young, year-round families into a neighborhood that we remember being packed with kids when we were little. It's variance-free, and it's consistent with Wayzata, what Wayzata says they want for the future of Wayzata, as far as is outlined in the comp plan. So I'm going to ask my, Pat actually said he wanted to say something about, click. Oh, actually, no, I'm sorry. We're really proud of this project, and this is our home in our neighborhood. We had a guiding vision at the outset of this project, and we feel that this project fulfills that vision. It is responsive, it is consistent, and it allows us to realize the value in our home. It's three lots and almost 12 acres. And I think, somebody said this is a really complicated project. I disagree. I don't think it's complicated. I think it's detailed, I think it's thoughtful, but I think it's very simple. It's three compliant lots on 12 acres, and there is no need for a variance. However, there may be questions, and I'm here to answer those questions, but I, I feel like this is a very clear proposal. And Pat did have something to say, so. And I have brought, one thing I should say, I've brought consultants if you have detailed questions, because I am not an engineer or a land planner.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Pat Steinhoff. I'm the attorney for the applicant, and I'm going to talk for less than two minutes about approval standards. The city has approval standards in its zoning ordinance and its subdivision ordinance, and this is a application for plat approval and the law on plat approval applications, which are a type of quasi-judicial decision, as if the, if the applicant meets all of the requirements and design criteria that are set forth in the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance, then the, the city has to approve it. It doesn't have any discretion to, to deviate from the standards that are in the code if there is a conforming application. So here- So here we have an applicant that has spent a very, very long time and worked very, very hard to present to you a fully conforming, three-lot subdivision application. They've worked very hard to make sure that it complies and conforms to all of the design criteria, all of the approval criteria in the city's ordinances. So the city can't deny it just because, you know, somebody would prefer two lots instead of three lots, or would prefer less riparian lots versus the three that are there, or because somebody doesn't like the width of the road, which is dictated by, by code. So in summary, this is a fully conforming application. The city doesn't have the discretion to deny it, so I ask that you recommend approval.
Click. So I'm here for any questions that you might have. I'm going to take a little drink of water.
Thank you, Samantha. Commissioners, are there any questions for the applicant or follow-up questions for staff?
I have a question.
Yes.
How long do you anticipate the grading and the truck sit and the trucks out in order to get the road and to get the lot sides, sides ready? Do you anticipate they're taking a long time? And, you know, I know that the neighbors, this is a concern for them.
Right. I'm going to ask David Listy, who is a contractor and who can speak to that much better than I can. I would be.
Good evening. David Listy from St. Michael and Vice President Rachel Contracting. We're based out of St. Michael. We do a lot of different development, developments and construction projects. So to the best of my ability, it's somewhere six to eight weeks total from start till finish. A lot of that is erosion control preparation to make sure that no sediment or soils leave the site. Got two to three weeks worth of grading. Need utility installation for another two weeks, and then that's when the pavement and retaining walls would happen. So maybe a month, worst case would be two months.
Okay, thank you.
Samantha, I have a question for you. I know you said there were, one of your, you were going to covenant the development order. Did you have any other covenants that you were going to include in, for any of the lots?
There is, I don't know if this is a covenant, that might be a legal term, but tying the two outlots to the two lots across the street, I'm not sure if that's a covenant or if that's just a legal, that's it.
Okay. I'm going to go a little bit off script here.
Okay.
I, I really, I like what you had to say about your conservation credentials, and I think my one challenge to you would be to include in your, in your lots, should it get approved, right, prohibiting the removal of any of the heritage trees on the property subsequent to purchase.
I, I don't think we can do that, but I do know that there are not, well, first of all, I should say, talking about the tree removals, they're, the forester at Wayzata thinks that we can, in fact, save an additional 30 trees, but we just have to assume that they're impacted until we get in there. But we're, so that would also be helpful. I, I don't, I don't know if I can put that sort of covenant on there.
And I don't, I don't know that I can, that, you know, our, that's beyond our purview as the Planning Commission as well, right? It was, but I think that it seems to be one of the items that gets people excited, right? And there's a, I was out there on Saturday, and there's a ton of trees on the property.
Yeah, I know.
Super cool, right? Like, you know, and.
A lot of the heritage trees, just so you know, are in the bluffs and in the steep slopes leading down to the lake that are not part of the buildable area. There are some heritage trees on Lot 1 that are behind where the house would be placed. But again, the house, if you were to place a house back there, it would get quite narrow. So I don't anticipate someone wanting to build a long, skinny house when they have a wider, open space. Lot 2 has a wide-open yard next to the house. We have a very large backyard that we grew up in. And if the house on Lot 2 is torn down, that is where we place the pad and where anyone would naturally place a house because it looks down on the lake. And so that, we're not worried about that. And Lot 1, the buildable area is so small that I, I don't think I could put that restriction on there. It might make that lot.
Fair. Fair. No, and I, and again, right, like, just to reiterate, right, that's outside of, outside of what we're here to talk about today, right?
Yeah. I'm a huge tree hugger. I get, I get it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Cool. All right. Thank you, Samantha. Thank you, Pat, and thank you, I didn't mention your name now. David. All of you for your.
If you have any other questions after the neighborhood comment, everybody here will stay who are much more expert at answering them than I am, so.
Cool. Thank you for your time and your presentation. I would now like to turn to the public hearing part, and I see we have some members of the public, so thank you for showing up today, and it's great to see you and, and welcome your input. So before I begin, I just a couple of quick comments. The public hearing is time for us to listen to members of our community about the requests we are considering. It is an important part of the process that allows the members of the public to participate and add their perspective as we consider these requests. Any questions asked during the public hearing will be held until the end of the hearing and may be addressed to staff at that point. With that said, I now open the public hearing of the Ferndale Bluff subdivision. If you wish to speak, please come forward to the podium or raise your hand if you're on Zoom and state your name and address for the record, and let us know if you are connected to the applicant in any way or representing anybody else.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Chair, appreciate your, the opportunity to address the public hearing. My name is Don Birdsong. Penny and I own the property at 621 and 623 Ferndale. We have the western property line with 565, so we share the property line. We were here the last time when the proposal came through. I'd like to, well, first of all, I guess, I'd like to say, maybe I don't want to take your time since Counselor's already told you you don't have any choice but to accept this, so maybe I shouldn't take your time. I believe you should deny this request on one simple reason, and, and it's, it's really basic. I think this is a really simple decision. Should one applicant create a hazard for another applicant? We believe the construction of the road so close to our property line creates a hazard for us. And Valerie, if you could pull up Slide 16, I, in the information I gave you, I highlighted one area in particular. And I believe the applicant tonight said nothing really changed with the road, that they moved it along the existing drive. I, I believe if you, and maybe I was wrong about that, but if you go back and look at the existing drive and where the road is, the new entrance from the last application now abuts our property line at Ferndale Road. The collection pond that you asked the question about, we have a collection pond that the city required, so they put in a street drain. It runs underneath and goes to a collection pond. It's not a pond, it's a dry piece of ground that only fills up when we really get a lot of rain or a spring runoff. Other than that, it's just basically a low spot in the, in the ground. But if you look at that road, the road runs right along our property line. The retaining wall that's seven to eight feet high is within sometimes 10 to 15 feet of our property line. But if you take a look at, and you can barely see it, right at the beginning of the cul-de-sac, you, it's, it's indistinguishable where the property line is there. It's, it's about an eight-foot elevation. I sent a couple of pictures along in our presentation. It raises eight feet from our driveway up to that area. The drive from house, from Lot 2, when snow is going to be pushed down, because it's going to be pushed down the driveway, it's going to be pushed down on the road and across the road and potentially, excuse me, and down onto our driveway. So we, we think that little, particular location creates a hazard. But nothing has really changed from the first application to this application with respect to the location of the road. It was proposed initially to have 3,900 cubic feet of, of cut taken away, which I think is something like 750 truckloads. In the initial application at 725 feet, the applicant said this reduces tree loss and reduces cut. Moving the road back therefore must increase tree loss and increase cut. So the cut's going to be larger, tree loss is going to be larger. Like I said, I think it's a simple issue. And, and let me say this, to be fair to the applicant, I don't believe they want the road there. They have to have the road there. We both share a ridge with a bluff to the east and a bluff to the west. We have a marsh, they have a lake. When you bring that bluff line in, then you put a 50-foot-deep house, and then you put the setback to the road. The road must go where it goes, or it doesn't work. It just doesn't work. So we're not saying you shouldn't approve it. We're just saying we don't agree, we think it creates a hazard for us. We, we just, we just strongly disagree. We believe you'll make the right decision. We do believe you do have a right to make the decision, regardless of what Counselor might say. And we, we appreciate the opportunity to give you our perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Anyone else? Anna Quarles, do we have anybody on the Zoom call?
I do not have anyone who's indicated they'd like to speak on Zoom or on Teams.
Excellent. Well, with that said then, if nobody else would like to speak, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission for discussion. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff or the applicant at this point, or any questions raised during the public hearing that you'd like staff to address?
I have a question.
Sure. Commissioner Seaborn.
I was conferring with my colleague. I'm sorry.
No, please.
All good.
You get to confer too.
Okay, so just so that I'm understanding, this is just to subdivide these three, right? And then the applicant, in theory, then still owns three separate lots, and then they get to do with them whatever they choose.
Yes, so they'll, they'll subdivide the property, and then my understanding is that they'll sell those lots to future buyers.
Yes, and then those future buyers can do whatever they want with it. So we could potentially see three variance requests coming back in at some point in the next two to three years? Is that fair?
If they wanted to do something that required a variance, they could go through the process, but, you know, part of the idea behind all of the information we ask for in the subdivision process is to show that it's possible without variances, so I would hope to not see them, but they could ask for a variance like any other applicant or property owner.
Okay. Thank you.
So, so to dig a little bit in term, in terms of the, the question that was brought up during the public hearing, is there, is there any city code in terms of, of change of elevation close to a, close to a lot line? Is there any, anything to, to look at there, or is it permitted in terms of whatever you'd like to do as long as it, there, there's nothing that would stop you from doing that change in elevation to that level?
We have regulations on the amount of grading that somebody can do on a property. This particular application doesn't come up against this threshold. It's an average of a two-foot grade change over an entire property, and because it's property is so large, it doesn't meet that. But I think that the biggest thing regarding elevation changes close to another property is typically drainage. We're most concerned with whether there's going to be water that runs off onto another property because of something that another property owner does, and there's exhibits within the application showing how they handle their own drainage through grading and through those stormwater ponds.
Thank you. Can I? Commissioner, could, Valerie, could you show us the slide with the retaining walls in red? So I'm trying to see where that, oh, okay. So after the retaining walls, it's back to surface road.
Yes, and there's still grading associated with that surface road, but at a certain point, it no longer requires a retaining wall.
It's, it's a little hard to see, but how close is that retaining wall actually to the property line? Is there an idea in terms of how?
I can, I'll double-check within the packet, or rather, I might ask Eric to double-check within the packet, but I believe it comes within about 10 feet at its closest, and that has to do with just the width of that outlot right there, just because the, the right-of-way doesn't come up and, and touch the insulator.
I, I was just reviewing the plans, and the red line on the west side, on the farthest north, is the closest to the property line, and that it looks like approximately eight feet from the retaining wall to the property line. And then, as you see, as it goes south, it goes farther away from, from the property.
And how tall is the retaining wall at that point, at the narrowest point?
At the narrowest point, it's, it's essentially zero. So the retaining wall kind of, you know, at each end matches the grade, and then approximately in the middle, you can see there's a, a line with an arrow that's where Outlet B and Outlet A, and that's where it's eight feet.
Sorry, I'm just pulling this up so I can use my cursor. So in the middle, it's at its tallest, and then at either end, it gets shorter.
Correct.
So there, so there, how far is it in from the lot line?
It's probably approximately 14 feet at, at that location.
So we can't really see there where the existing house or the existing road is, or can you describe that to the, to the property?
The existing driveway, are you referring to?
No, according to this plan.
Yep.
Even the slide that's got those red lines on it, where is the house to the west and the driveway to the west compared to that?
Let me pull up the, one of the satellite images.
Looks like.
At the same time, if you look at page 47 of your packet, you will see that specific plan sheet on its own, and you could zoom in there and look, look a little bit. But on that plan sheet on page 47, you do see the existing house.
And that driveway to that existing house goes up and around. Is that right?
It comes in from, from the west and then basically on the north side of the house.
They don't, those two driveways will not come that close together?
Those two driveways will not touch. You know, there, there's, as they show, as shown on the plan, there's, there's very little gap, if any, between the Birdsong driveway and the property line, but there is 10 feet between the property line and the right-of-way, and then there's approximately 12 feet between the right-of-way and what will be the public road. So in the neighborhood of 22 feet or so.
Well, are you saying that the Birdsong driveway comes right up to the property line?
That is what that plan is showing, yeah. That's, that's kind of the cul-de-sac at the end of their driveway, there, right to the west of the property line.
So they don't have any distance between their driveway and the end of their lot?
Maybe a foot, but very little. I mean, it's not displaying on this.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
City Attorney Shelzal, I have just a question for you about hazard creation. So one of the things Mr. Birdsong brought up was creation of hazard on his property. Could you tell us a little bit about how that works and what happened, like, what is allowable, not allowable, and expand on that for us a little?
Chair, well, I can, what I can say is that, you know, the city, pardon me, addresses safety issues through its code and through its regulations, through what you're looking at, but I'd say also what the city engineer reviews, what the building official reviews. As, as staff has shared, I don't think the city engineer had any concerns with the design of the driveway in terms of it creating a safety issue. And in, in terms of being compliant with the code, I think the driveway is, is compliant.
Okay. Okay.
Comments, I guess? So if I'm seeing this correctly, the closest point that anything related to the driveway, the retaining wall at the north end, might be as close as eight feet.
That is what the plan said.
The furthest west edge of the driveway at any point still provides a 10-foot, it looks like, space to the property line.
There is a 10-foot outlot before the right-of-way even begins. And then it's a 24-foot road within a 50-foot right-of-way. So if you put that right in the middle, you would have a 13-foot space between the right-of-way line to the edge of the road. That would be 23 feet would be the closest for the public road to the property, to the...
Got it.
To the property line.
Got it.
The pavement surface?
So the dotted line is not the, like, curb and gutter?
No, the dotted line just indicates the public right-of-way that will be dedicated.
Got it, okay, okay. Oh, that makes a huge difference.
Cool. Anybody else for staff or for the applicant? All right, thank you, staff. I'd like to just open this up for our internal discussion now. And just kind of understand, you know, where people are at and what you guys are thinking. Does anybody want to start out?
Well, I would just share that I really appreciate the effort that the family has made in making these adjustments. And I would agree with those reported staff comments that this is a game changer and significant, in the right direction. I personally think they've done a really outstanding job in meeting the requirements of the city. And it's a development consistent with our plan and desire for the community, the 2040 plan. They've demonstrated, you know, it's compliant on so many levels. There are no variances. I just, I think it's well done, and I would have no problem supporting this plan.
One thing that I really like about this whole evening is to see how passionate everybody who lives on Ferndale is about their neighborhood. Whether you're for this particular proposal or not, everybody's passionate about it. They love their neighborhood, they love it the way it is. It's always hard to see change. And for the most part, it seems like a lot of that's going to happen in that month and a half, two months, where a lot of grading is going on. And then hopefully, a lot of it will be a ways off from what most people would see. It is impressive that the family went to such, really, I don't know if I should say extremes or not, but they really took into considerations everybody's point of view and did what they could to change the road, to change the number of lots, to save as many trees as possible. And it seems like there are quite a few more trees that are saved in this one. And particularly, when you save heritage trees, that means a lot to a town like Wayzata. So I guess that's what I have to say about my overall feeling about it.
Thank you.
I would agree. I think the family has done a wonderful job of being good stewards of the land. I walked the property on Saturday. I think the three lots are very thoughtfully placed. It is in that neighborhood. I mean, I live in that neighborhood. I feel like it's in with that neighborhood. And I, you know, if you look at these questions, I think that we fall in that approval.
Thank you.
I'm a relatively newcomer to this Ferndale bluff. And as I looked into it, at each point, it was, you know, as the density met, a lot of questions and comments about the street, which is the city putting requirements onto the development. The shoreline setbacks, the tree removal. I smiled when I saw how many inches were removed and how many were going to be put back on, because I didn't even know where you're going to try to find spots, because there's a lot of trees. So I agree that in general, there is a thoughtful process here. I do understand the comments that came up with during the public hearing. I don't know if the safety issue is wondering if someone might fall off that seven- or eight-foot thing, and if there could be an indication that there be a fence of some sort put on top. Otherwise, I'm not sure that there's, I understand the concern there. But that was my only thought.
Thank you.
Looking at me? No, I mean, I think, I wasn't here last year, so I did not, I was absent from the Planning Commission meeting last year, so I missed that. But I think from what I've understood and what I hear and what I'm looking at here today, I think it's thoughtfully done. And also, just I really appreciate all of the neighbors clearly passionate for your neighborhood. Not only, you know, those of you who spoke tonight, but all of the, I think it's probably the most comments we've ever gotten for an application, at least in my four years here. So I just really appreciate that, and I think that just speaks so well of our community. But I would agree that with my fellow commissioners that I think it meets all of the standards here. I just, you know, I like that there aren't any variances. I like that you're using the land for the way you have it or the way it is. And just hope that we don't see variances in two years for houses there. So I hope that your new builders will be respectful of where we plotted these potential plans. So I'm good.
Thank you.
Chair.
Yes, absolutely. I think the level of, the amount of work and passion that's gone into it is amazing and super cool. I appreciate the fact that there's no variance request on any of this. Side note, you guys must add some wick and sledding adventures when you're moving with all those hills. But no, I think it's, I like it. I think it's always a challenge to make everybody happy. I think, Bonnie, I think you, or, sorry, Commissioner Schwab, you said it best around, like, change is hard, right? But it can't stay the way that it is forever, right? Like, sooner or later, things, you know, things are going to change. Situations change, right? Parents age out, and then what, right? Like, I don't live in my parents' house anymore, but they still do. But for how much longer, I don't know, right? And, you know, so I think you guys have done a really good job with it. I'll echo Commissioner Severson's comments, or on the public comments, and the number of public comments that we got about it, I think was really good, so. Cool. Anybody else? All right, thank you, Commissioners. It sounds like we have a consensus. Can I have a motion to direct staff to prepare a draft report and recommendation for approval of the subdivision?
Yes, I'll move to direct staff to prepare a draft planning commission report and recommendation of approval of the application for review and adoption at the next Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner El and Commissioner Severson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. The draft report and recommendation will be on the consent agenda at our next meeting, and after adoption will go to city council for their consideration. Thank you, applicant, and everybody who's put so much time and effort into this. And thank you, public, for your comments and your passion around this as well, and your belief in your neighborhoods. That concludes the public hearing portion of our meeting. Next on the agenda is other items. Plan of Quarles?
I apologize, Chair, I'm going to take the development activities.
Perfect.
So, you know, we've all been watching Wells Fargo, and, you know, that continues to move forward. The one other to note is that 150 Broadway, so kind of kitty corner here, that has received its building permit and is now doing the foundation utility work. But you will see that construction happening soon. And then it's the applications that you'll see on the next couple of Planning Commission meetings. We have a fence variance for our next meeting, but then we will have...
Could we ask the public to take conversations out into the hall?
Good.
Thank you.
The applications that we'll be seeing at the next couple of Planning Commission meetings, we have a fence variance at our next meeting. We have 200 Lake Street, or the former TCF building, which is planned on March 24th. And then we will see requests for a communications tower at the XL substation, kind of on the north end of Central Avenue in April.
So 200 Lake Street is going to be what date?
March 24th.
I don't know if you're aware, they sent an email to all of the commissioners. Is that something that's relevant to share to staff? Like, they, like, offering to meet with them and...
We didn't get, they sent out a similar email to the city council, and that got forwarded to us, so it doesn't surprise us. I think I'll turn it to the city attorney on advice about taking...
I have not responded, but I didn't know what to do with it.
Yeah, Commissioners in general, I think it's good to keep staff in the loop if you get communications from applicants, if only so that staff knows about what information you're receiving, if it's something that we need to add to the record or perhaps advise you on. You know, our standing advice to Commissioners is to generally not meet with developers who might come before you so that you can maintain objectivity and an open mind about every application. If they want to share information with you, I think you can certainly ask them to communicate, or if they have questions, ask them to communicate directly with staff. So that's our standing advice to you, which I know you're all familiar with.
So just for the rest of the, I just forwarded that over to you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I did respond, and all I said was, thank you for your email, and that I really think it's best for all of us to hear what he has to say at the same time, in the same place, same words, and that I'm looking forward to hearing about that at his meeting, at the next meeting here. And he replied and said, "Thank you," and he looked forward to being here too. So I just acknowledge that he sent it.
If I could expand on that, just to make you aware, for that particular development, our public engagement process or public information process does require a neighborhood meeting that will be conducted here. Now, as far as I'm aware, they have not scheduled that meeting. You can attend that meeting. If you do, all we do is, you know, ask you to not participate in comments and the like. Between that and the city website has all the material that they've submitted, so, you know, you are able to review it there. So I think there are other, there are alternatives to review the information submitted by the applicant other than taking them up on their offer, on their email.
So if they, when they schedule a public, like, a neighborhood meeting, how much notice do they have to give? And how soon before the meeting, like, could this get pushed another meeting because they haven't gotten that schedule? What's the timing typically for that?
So they have to have the meeting 10 days before the public hearing, and then I think it's just a week before that, they have to send out the letter. They, we originally had said that we were tentatively going to have it on March 10th. And at that point, they had this room scheduled for February 27th. But for various reasons, we moved it two weeks, so they'll probably move their neighborhood meeting two weeks.
And where is their neighborhood meeting here?
Yeah, here in this chamber.
And what is considered neighborhood, asking as a neighbor?
Is that one 500 or 1,000?
It's either 500 or 750. I'll double-check what we, the radius that was set. But it's open to everybody. Those are just the folks that would have received a notice, would, will or would receive a notice in the mail about it. But it's open to everybody.
So we've got 200 Lake coming March 24th, assuming all that goes off. The fence variance, is that next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
March 10th.
And then the communications tower?
I'm not sure whether that will be the first or second meeting in April.
Okay.
Cool. Anything else?
No, I'll just note our next meeting is March 10th. And I think after canceling a lot of meetings last year, we're on a streak of not canceling them too often this year. So anytime you know you're going to be absent, just let us know in advance just so we can keep track of that.
Excellent.
Can I just ask a procedural question? Or should I do it after we're done, about how the meeting went tonight?
We can chat after, you and I.
Let's do that. I just have a question about what happens when. Okay.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for your participation this evening. This concludes the items on our agenda. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Well, since you would to adjourn.
I second, Schwab.
Thank you, Commissioner El, Commissioner Schwab. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and the meeting is adjourned.